Good evening and welcome to the Harrison City Council Meeting for March 21st, 2023. If you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you please remain standing, I'd like to invite Mr. Michael Futrell from Triumphant Baptist Church to provide the following statements.
Will you bow together with me for a word of prayer? Dear heavenly Father, Lord, thanks so much for this evening and, Lord, thank you for this opportunity where we can come as members of our community as well as elected officials to talk about business that pertains to our city. And, Father, I pray that you give wisdom to our mayor and our councilmen and councilwomen. And, Lord, thank you for just their service to our community. And, Father, also thank you for each of the individuals from our community who came out to participate this evening. And, Father, I pray that you would continue to bless our families here in our community, that we would continue to see our city grow. And, Father, thank you for just the opportunity to live in such a wonderful place. And, Lord, I pray you give us wisdom once again tonight. In Jesus' name I ask this, amen.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Egner.
Here.
Mr. Grubbs.
Here.
Mr. Samuels.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Mr. Maynes.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
The first item this evening is approval of council meeting minutes for March 7th, 2023. So move.
Second.
Corrections or additions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dole.
Yay.
Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
We'll move into the guests and visitors. Shannon, would you like to introduce our first guest?
I don't think we have anybody here from the Chamber of Commerce, so I'll take the pleasure of introducing this month's Member of the Month for the Chamber of Commerce, Jason Vogelsang. I'm going to invite him to come up and tell us a little bit about his business and his new digs. Just come on up.
Appreciate it. Yeah, my name is Jacob Vogelsang. I usually have a partner with me. His name's Evan Houns. He's on vacation, so I'm handling this myself today. But we work at a company. We started a business over in the Harrison Square. It's called Health Markets Insurance. We've been there for pretty close to a year now. I'm not a huge public speaker, so I'll just kind of hit on some basic stuff and then I'll turn it back over. But basically, where me and Evan kind of started, we grew up together, went to middle school, high school together, then he went to the Marines for four years. I went to Ball State and graduated from there. From there, we both kind of made our way back to Batesville, which is where we live now, and we decided to get into insurance. We serviced three states, Indiana, Ohio, and Kentucky, for the last three years, and then we kind of wanted a centralized location. We wanted a place that was similar to Batesville, you know, a tight-knit community that you can kind of do everything in, and that's what landed us here in Harrison. So we've been there for, you know, pretty close to a year now. We service pretty much everybody that needs health insurance, life insurance, or Medicare. So that's, you know, 26-year-old coming off of a parent's plan, all the way up to, you know, anybody who's self-employed, all the way up to 65, helping people enroll in Medicare. We really take care of all your options. We're a brokerage, so we represent every option that's available in the state, so that really helps us kind of, you know, go down any path that anybody needs insurance-wise. From there, basically, you know, we enjoy insurance. I know it's not the greatest thing in the world. It's kind of like watching paint dry, but Evan and I love it. So we're happy to help anybody that, you know, you know, needs any services in the community, and we're really happy to be here. I'd just like to thank a couple of quick places. One's anybody who allows us to do marketing to get our name out. That would be, you know, the Harrison Press, the newspaper, the Town Money Saver, and Eagle Country in Lawrenceburg. Those are just a couple of big ones that help us. I'd also like to thank the Chamber for allowing us to be a part, networking and getting our name out in the community to help anybody that's out there. And I'd also like to thank the Greater Harrison Rotary Club for allowing us to kind of get a foot in the door and basically, you know, allowing us to do our services in the community. From there, thank you for, you know, voting us to be the Member of the Month. It really is truly an honor for me and Evan. I know he's not here, but it is an honor for us to be there. We had a successful first year, and hopefully we're here to service the community for years to come. So from there, I'll kind of kick it back to you guys. That's about all I got. So thank you.
You do a great job for public, not public speaking.
So it might be boring to watch paint dry, but it's important that it's done right, just like insurance. You get bad insurance, you're never happy. Bad paint job, you're just as unhappy. Next, we have the library update.
I know she'd giggle.
It's spelled correctly on my agenda.
I trust you. It's easy, I'm easy to get along with. If you don't know me already, my name is Caitlin. I am the Branch Supervisor Youth Services from the Harrison Branch of the Public Library. We come and try to do an update at least once a month as we can, and last few times, it's just been me because we're running without a manager. Our past manager, Michelle, moved on. She moved up. She is one of our regional managers in the library now, and congratulations to her. But we did just get word today that they do have a new manager in place, and their start date is the end of April, and, I mean, I have enjoyed steering the ship, but lightly more stress than I'm used to, so I am very excited to get this new person. It's a person from inside the system, so they already know how our system works. We won't have to reinvent the wheel. We're really excited to have them, and next month when I do my update, I will hopefully have more details. I've asked for some flavor to share with you all and haven't gotten a response yet, but I just got the announcement today. So I am excited to share, we have been working on our customer experience, kind of piece of what we offer at the library. This is a behind-the-scenes piece. When we come to do updates, we really like to talk about, you know, services that you can see, that, you know, are free copying and printing, our, you know, the tax prep, the story walk, the big things that you can see. But we do awesome things behind the scenes, too, and our work on the customer experience survey, we actually got as much of our staff together as we could this last week and sat down, and we got to think of our top three pain points, things that are hard for customers when they come into the library, like where does that interaction break down? We got to sit down and, you know, figure out what the priority was on those things, how frustrating they are for customers, how frustrating they are for staff. Then we got to talk about our top three proud points as well, the things that, you know, we can see on people's faces that when we either tell them we have this service or help them through it, that they're really excited about, that the community really appreciates. So we actually do, in Hamilton County, we have a customer experience manager who, it's his job to, you know, compile information from surveys like this so that, you know, we can improve slowly but surely in large systems, but all of that work behind the scenes helps with what we do every day as well. So thanks for my short update today. More information about a manager next time. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Next, we have some presentations from the American Legion. Mr. Wilson.
If we could have the representative from the after-prom. Representative grew up to meet Jean. They wrote us a letter and said they reached a little money for the after-prom party, which we think is a great idea for kids, and Jean is presenting her a check right now for $500. And to earn that, you can say whatever you want for the next 10 minutes.
First off, I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much. Holly and I kind of took this on last minute. We don't have a lot of volunteers. We don't have a lot of money, so this helps tremendously. The kids deserve to have fun, a safe environment for after-prom, so they're going to be going to The Place, which is up on Galbraith Road, and they offer skating, ropes course.
Arcade.
Arcade, laser tag.
Bumper car thingies.
And then we get a bunch of fun prizes from local businesses that are so generous to donate to us, and most of the kids walk away with a prize just for coming and being safe and making good decisions on prom night, so we just really appreciate this and thank you very much.
And if you're looking for volunteers, Ryan Grubbs and Brian Samuels like to work with teenagers.
We always need volunteers. Always need volunteers.
As long as it's over by like 9:30.
Bedtime is 9:30. The other group we've got here tonight, we got a letter from, American Legion did, from Post Crosby Boy Scout Troop 293, and they would come up to where Jean's at. We'd appreciate it. You can say if you want.
Do we have anybody else present that would like to speak this evening? Okay, we'll move into the business portion of the meeting. First item this evening is request or do not request a hearing for liquor license transfer. This is transfer the liquor license Market Street Grill to the new owner, from the prior owner. Anybody have a burning desire? Okay, we will not request a hearing. Second item is to set a public hearing for 400 Harrison Avenue on conditional use approval. So we need to pick a date and time to set that. It went through public, a public hearing and a vote at planning commission, and now it needs to come to council.
We want to do that before the next council meeting?
Seven o'clock at eight. Can we do that? Yep. So, gonna make a motion? Eighteenth.
Wilson will make it. JW, make a motion. Do we have it at the next council meeting, at seven, before the next council meeting at seven o'clock?
It would be April 4th, right? You want...
Does it have to be longer than...
It has to be...
It has to be two weeks longer.
I have to advertise it, but I can do that online now since it's a planning.
So is that enough time, or do we need to do the...
Rachel, would I give you enough time?
Um, yeah, if I told them to put it in tomorrow, it would be right at... Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay.
Okay. I thought we needed more time. That's why I said the eighteenth.
Well, when I have to put it in the paper, I do need more time, but I don't have to...
Yeah, we don't have to do that anymore.
Yeah, we, I think we can do it.
So the motion is for April 4th at 7:00 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call on setting the public hearing.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
So, April 4th, 7:00 PM.
Okay. Next item is a vote on an ordinance to approve a water system access fee increase and a sanitary wastewater system access fee increase, tap fees. Cost of putting taps in is going up, so we're increasing our rate to make sure that we cover our cost.
Motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Okay, that's ordinance five of 23. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add an agenda item for tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and second to add an item. Roll call, please.
Egner.
Yeah.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Nay.
Well, Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Okay, so the item is added to the agenda. What item do you have?
Uh, Mayor, we have the ordinance here to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Harrison and the Fraternal Order of Police. So it's the police contracts we recently negotiated and were approved by the FOP members.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to give some input on my vote for this. I haven't had a chance to read it yet. It was just sent a couple of hours ago, so that's the reason for my vote when I do vote. It was really short notice. I understand that they want to push it through when I get that, but I just don't see the need to do it this meeting versus next meeting, since there's no pressing need for it, but that's just kind of some insight.
Mayor, if I may, address council. I certainly understand Ms. Dole's concern. Just to be clear, the only thing that changed on this contract was the salary terms. Every other word in the contract basically is exactly what it was before.
So the wages.
Right, so the only the wages changed, so all the language just rolled over from the previous collective bargaining agreement, and I believe it was a...
Four-three-three percent.
Four percent the first year and then two-three percents after that.
Roll call, please.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Nay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
That's ordinance six of 23.
Any other items for this evening's agenda? We'll move to reports. Today was the first full day of spring. It's getting warm out. People are becoming more active, and that includes young children, so as the adults, we need to be more aware of our children if we have young kids that we're responsible for, and if we don't, we need to be aware that they might dart out from a car between parked cars or chase a ball into the street type of thing, so be aware of that, be safe. Additionally, with this time of year comes severe weather, so be aware of your surroundings. If you're out at a park or something and it starts to get dark, look at the sky, be careful about it. They're predicting some heavy rains this coming week, so just with spring and the change in the seasons comes a change in how we need to react to different things. In the winter, we don't see as many people out and as active, but there still people are in the winter, but significant change now, the weather's getting nice. That's all I have for this evening. Mr. Wilson, do you have a report?
Law Director.
Oh, Law Director, I'm sorry.
No, man, I haven't.
I knew he didn't have one.
We've already heard him once.
Now we'll go to Mr. Wilson.
He knew you didn't have a report, that's why he didn't mention it. Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. We had a fire committee meeting tonight. Everything's really going good. We had two fires. One was in Indiana. One was out at the trailer park, and it was about a $45,000 loss. Fortunately, there was no person in the mobile home when it caught fire, and our fire department just basically kept it from going anywhere else because they didn't want to take the chance to go inside and have someone injured, which I don't blame them. We have officer promotions coming up where, because we got one gentleman retiring, so Lieutenant Mike Remroth will be promoted to captain, firefighter Eric Well will be, Will will be promoted to lieutenant. We have three people that have, we're going to be hiring. They've got conditional offers, and we're waiting to announce those until we let the people know that didn't get picked, so they wouldn't hear it any other way. But everything is looking pretty good with the fire department. At the meeting tonight was Ryan, Ryan, Mark, Mayor, Chief, and me, so I appreciate everybody's attendance. The other thing I've got, Mr. Mayor, is I want to congratulate our girls wrestling team on their second state championship in a row. This is the first official one because it was officially endorsed this year, and I think they're doing an outstanding job for our whole community. I'm so impressed with those young ladies, and I feel sorry for any boy that wants to date them. We had a planning commission last Tuesday. It was kind of heated. It was very well-attended. What I mean by that is we had it here, and we had over 125 people, which many of them were out in the foyer, and this next planning commission we're going to have, we're going to have it down at the Legion Hall, and that'll be on the, April the 11th at 7:30 is when that'll, that'll come about. At the last planning commission, we had three things that were brought up. One was a truck sales lot out on Harrison Avenue next to Randy Lane's Auto Body, which Randy Lane owns that building, and we approved that usage. We had a proposal for someone wanted to put a laundromat in the old, for you people who've been around a while, the old Buddy Fernstein gas station. Most of you probably don't know who in the heck that was, but it's right on the 400 block of Harrison Avenue, and we don't feel that that's in the line that we want in the Dora District, so, and it would be a 24-hour laundromat, not manned, and we didn't like that idea, so we rejected that. The other thing we brought up was the new, Carolina Trace proposal to build quite a few homes out there, and there was a lot of people here, and the only thing I'm sad about, of all the people that are here speaking and a lot of them against it, there was only about 18 from the City of Harrison. The rest of them all lived outside the city, which is, they're allowed to be here, they're allowed to speak, and we appreciate their opinion, but I was just disappointed there wasn't more city representatives at that meeting. That was tabled, and that'll come up at the next planning commission. I understand that they've made a different, a little slight change to their proposal in that the lots on facing Carolina Trace and facing Land Hill South will be a minimum of 75 feet wide, each one of them, so that's the only change, so we will be having another hearing on that. The other thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is I keep mentioning every council meeting about the scholarships the Legion's giving away for students at Harrison High School. We are picking up those scholarship applications this next Monday, so if you've got a child, grandchild, or someone that goes to Harrison High School that's a senior, they'll need to have those applications filled out by Monday, and we're giving out 10 $1,000 scholarships, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, just so everybody's clear, the laundromat was brought in as a conditional use, so regardless whether it was recommended or not by planning commission, it still must come to council, and council has the ability to agree with planning commission or by supermajority disagree with them and approve it. So we have to bring it to the, and that's what we set that public hearing for. Just so people understand that it went through step one, and most businesses in the DRD don't come in as conditional, they stop after step one. This was conditional, it goes through two stages. Mr. Egner, do you have a report this evening?
Mayor, I do not have a report. I just want to speak on the wrestling program. I have, I have extended an invitation to Chris Baird to bring the girls in to council again.
Agreed.
I'm just waiting to hear back as to what date he can, he can make it happen, and that's all I have.
Okay, well, let me know when they're going to be here. We'll get them on the agenda and the visitors.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Grubbs, do you have a report?
Just a couple items. Mayor, yeah, a huge, huge accomplishment for the women's wrestling across the country. You know, they're well-known all the way across the country for their wrestling with Chloe and Reagan, both state champions, but there were six wrestlers, I believe, all together.
There were five that placed, four girls, one boy.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely magnificent accomplishment. Congratulations to all of them, and make sure it's not the second meeting because I'll be missing that one.
Okay.
And, Mayor, you stole my thunder on, on the kids. Be careful on the kids. I was coming down Harrison Heights Hill, and there was a kid, or I was going up the hill, and there was a kid racing down on their bike. Obviously, it's, it's a season for kids to get out and about, so just be careful, keep your eyes open. And then if you go to the Hamilton County Emergency Management website, there are a couple of apps that you can download, Alert Hamilton County, and then Storm Ready. That way, you're aware of any weather alerts or traffic alerts or anything major taking place into, or in Hamilton County. And then there's Alert 411 for local alerts. You can sign up for Harrison specific or across Hamilton County, but definitely recommend them. Unfortunately, sometimes when you're dozing, the alarm will go off, and then it kind of startles you a little bit, but still worth having. And then that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Samuels, do you have a report this evening?
Can I analyze that also?
Hey, Shannon, can you go up there because it's really hard to hear if you're in the audience?
Hello? You had it good. I'm not sure what's...
Okay, sorry about that if I did that. I just wanted to add on to Mr. Grubbs' comment that if you also go to the city website, you can sign up to be notified by anything that we post. Usually, when we get posts like that, we'll send those out, so if you do sign up for notifications on the city website, you'll also get notified. We'll push that out to you, too, so just wanted to mention that.
That's the Alert 411, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
It'll also be on the emergency banner.
Okay, Mr. Samuels.
Are you not Shannon? No, actually, Mayor, I have no updates. Police Committee was canceled tonight, so I have no updates for this.
Thank you.
Evening.
Ms. Dole, do you have a, Ms. Dole, do you have a...
Yes, Mayor, I do. So the district met on the 9th and basically just went over all of the events for the year and kind of got some more details in place for those. The first event is on May 20th. That's going to be the food truck rally. So far, they have 21 trucks for that, and I should have a list as it gets a little bit closer, but we're all really excited for that. If anybody wants to volunteer, they are always looking for volunteers as well, so definitely let us know. And then we also had Chief Hersong come, and he explained a little bit about Meridian barriers, which we're looking to buy for the downtown specifically events. They can also be used for other things around town, but for, especially for the events where we have the crowds down on Main Street to kind of block so that no cars can drive through, and it kind of controls traffic where we have all of the pedestrians down in there. That's a good opportunity for sponsorship. You can put your business's logo right on there, so if anyone is looking to get involved with that, just let us know. They're a little bit pricey, they're $7,000, so anyone who has any interest in sponsoring partial barriers or a full one to yourself, just let us know. And then, other than that, our tree board, we have the next meeting on the 28th at 7:00 PM for social media. Our next meeting is April 4th at 8:00 AM at the Coffee Peddler, and then our next IT meeting is at 5:15 on April 4th. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilson, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mayor, thank you. I think it's mine. I won't use it.
We had our Harrison Recreation Committee meeting on March the 8th. I'm pleased to say we have a full summer planned. It'll start in spring. It'll start with our Easter program on April the 8th from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. There's a pancake breakfast by the Boy Scouts, and then the activities start, I think that's at 8:00, and then 8:00 to 9:00, and then at 9:00 AM to 11:00, we'll have the Easter Bunny out there. We'll have games that Legacy Church is going to be running for us. We're going to have crafts by Miami Whitewater United Methodist Church. Hamilton County 4-H will be here. The details are still being worked out with them. We'll have a magician. All kinds of people will be down here. And at 11:00 AM, the Easter egg hunt will start, which will be done by 11:02, I'm sure. We also are in the midst of the Summer Fund. Summer Fund signups will be April the 19th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here at the Community Center, and Saturday, April the 22nd from 10:00 to noon here at the Community Center. And Summer Fund will run June the 13th through July the 27th. We also have our band schedules. The summer concerts will start on June the 13th, and our first band will be 90 Proof Twang. On June the 27th will be The Menus. July the 18th will be Black Bone Cat, and August the 1st will be The Naked Karate Girls. We're also in the midst of planning the July 4th celebration. We're still working on our plans, but for the parade, former mayor and former city council member Archie Mason will be the grand marshal. August the 12th, we're planning a cruise-in. September the 9th will be the citywide yard sale. October the 29th will be Spontacular, and December the 2nd will be the Christmas Parade. Our next meeting for the Harrison Recreation Committee will be April the 12th, 2023, here at the Community Center at 7:00 PM. And last week, I had... And last week, I had the pleasure, along with Lexi, the mayor, Chief Hursong, acting chief cider, we went and welcomed the Magic Land of Harrison. It's located in the Remke Plaza in between the, oh, you were there, Shannon. Sorry about that. In between the Fitness Center and Dollar Tree. And if you have young children, I think it's going to be a great place for them to go. A lot of activities there. They've done a really nice job. And I think it's, it's really going to be very, very nice for families to have on their shoulder. And I believe, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, I did overlook some things. I didn't, I didn't have any committee updates, but I did want to mention that the Finance Committee has been moved to March thirtieth at four-thirty. I think Kim has got some conflicts with our original time, so it's been moved. Also, we are having our public work session tomorrow at five-thirty to discuss the fire levy and the options available, or what direction we want to go in, for the replacement of the levy, if we do want to replace it. So also, I do want to bring up, because I think you were supposed to bring it up, regarding the CPR class.
Yes.
I'll put that in your report.
I knew there was another, yeah. Why don't you go ahead and talk about that? We do have a CPR session for council members. The fire department has been offering, oh, Chief sent me a message on it, too. Sorry. I'm glad I didn't look at my phone during our council meeting, though. So we have a council CPR session on April sixth at five o'clock for any council member that wants to come. And then the fire department is still offering, actually, if there's space available, I'm sure we'll take anybody in. It's not just for council people. But there are sessions available. If you want to reach out to the fire department to sign up for a CPR session, there are space available. And if there's any complications, just leave a message for Chief, and he'll take care of it, so. That'll be downtown.
Station fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Wilson, JW, move to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call.
My kids are home alone right now.
Samuels?
Yay.
Dole?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Egner?
Yay.
Grubbs?
Yay.
Rest in adjournment. Thank you.